Let's start the meeting. Uh, missing Mr. Burman?
Andy, yes. He sends his apology.
Excuse me?
He sends his apology. I got me called Nancy.
Oh, okay, so he's not gonna be here today? Okay. All right. Um, just a reminder, it'll be recorded in cell phones if we could put them on vibrate. Vice Chair will...
First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Um, first is from May 10th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 10th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second is the minutes from June 14th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 14th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third is the minutes from July 12th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 12th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally are the minutes from August 9th, 2018. Do I have a copy of those? Yeah, okay, I did read those.
I wasn't there, so...
I wasn't here either. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, but I wasn't...
Okay. Were you there?
Um, I was there.
Okay.
So, but is there enough people to approve the minutes? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Two.
Two.
You need two.
I think we just need a majority.
Okay.
Make a motion, I'll second it.
Make, I make, make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on the board is petition of Steve and Karen May, 44 Cleverly Street, Street, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll hear the petition of Stephen and Karen May, 44 Cleverly Street, Abington, for a six-foot setback variance to construct within the 35-foot setback under 17529 at 44 Cleverly Street. Property located on Assessor's Map 53, Lot 55, in the R20 zone.
Okay.
Anything from sewer on that, sir?
Let's see, um, says here, no bearing on the sewer, 44 Cleverly.
Okay.
So what do we have here for this project?
Um, Karen and Stephen May, 44 Cleverly Street. And we just want to put a, a deck on the back of the house that's over our two-car garage. Presently, there's a set of stairs, that's the second means of egress. Um, and it's basically going over one of, um, the garage doors. And we want to put the, uh, the deck off the back and the sta, the stairs down to the, to the side yard, as that's really the only place that could go, it could go. Otherwise, it would be in driveway area and not allowing cars access.
It's a six-foot, it's a, uh, it's a six-foot catwalk, 10-foot five, dropping a set of stairs down into the side yard.
So on this plot, you're doing a proposed... Ah, thank you. This is the rear of your house.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're doing a proposed addition, correct?
Do you have this with the little drawing on the back?
Yes.
Well, a deck.
That one's actually a little different.
I don't know about the addition right now.
Oh.
I don't have the money, but it's gonna be a deck first.
So you, you asking for relief on the deck or the stairs? What do you ask?
But we're asking for, for relief on the stairs.
On the stairs.
The stairs are going six feet beyond the house. The house is at 35 feet from, uh, Morton Street Extension. And the front of my house is 35 feet. I'm a corner lot, so I'm looking for six feet beyond my house for a catwalk, 10-foot five, and then a set of stairs down to my side yard.
So the...
All parallel with the side of my house.
So actually, the deck is, is not the issue, it's the stairs, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But this part here is not stairs. This is the stair.
Yeah.
So this is not, this is deck.
It's deck, six feet of deck, it's a catwalk.
Well, you said stairs.
10-foot five, catwalk.
So it's, yeah, 'cause stairs aren't normally six feet wide, right?
No.
They're, I don't know, 30 inches, 36 inches, something, I don't know what they are. But they're not normally six, so you were saying stairs, but this isn't...
That's what I'm looking for, six feet.
This isn't stairs here, this is a wraparound deck, is what you're asking for. And then the stairs are here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's basically a, a means of egress off that back of the house to get out. It's the second means of egress.
Uh, but I'm just saying, you didn't have to come out a full six feet off of that.
Right here, right there, that six feet you're talking about, right there?
Yeah.
I built the house and I, and I, and I'll reduce it to four feet if you want.
I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, words mean things here, and you were saying it was just six feet of stairs, but I was looking at the drawing and it's not. It's a wraparound deck with a staircase.
Right.
So that's what you're asking.
Yeah, you're asking for more six feet.
10-foot five of decking to a set of stairs. So it comes, it comes off the house, six feet, and then from the corner of the house, it comes in 10-foot five, and then there's a set of stairs.
Right, so from the corner of the house, from the back corner of the house to the front of the house is 10 and a half feet. That's, that's the dimension you're quoting, 'cause the deck is proposed to be 19 feet across on the back, correct, as drawn? From here to here?
Yeah, that's what it's showing right there, 19 feet.
The deck is, uh, is the width of the house, which is 28 feet. It's a colonial. So the deck is 28 feet plus six. And I'm going out 12 off the back of the house. Can't be leaving it 10. I have a two-car garage under. And these were in the existing plans when I applied to do this. I just didn't have the money to do it.
When was that, sir?
2006, I think.
Yeah, 2006.
You say that this was approved originally?
Yeah.
I doubt that. The, uh, I'm looking at the zoning relief that was granted. And you took a 22,500 square foot lot, cut it in half, made it non-conforming, then said you had a hardship and gave relief. And the relief that's granted is pretty, is specific, uh, in area, uh, frontage, et cetera, with regards to that. I had never seen that this was previously approved. I didn't do the calculations to verify whether or not, uh, that was approved. I wouldn't have denied, I wouldn't deny this if this relief that was originally approved by this board in '04, um, if it intended to include this deck that we're talking about, the relief would be different, then, uh, I, you know, he wouldn't have to be here now if that was, uh, if that was the case. So I don't think it was originally approved. In addition, this isn't a certified plot plan, so what you're granting here, if you intend to move forward with this petition, you don't really know what you're granting, 'cause we don't really know where the house is. And, um, the applicant says he had paid for an ASBILT and he's unable to locate it and either unable to, um, contact, uh, the engineer, or the engineer was unable to locate it as well. This may be, uh, where we're at, it may not be. It may have been what was proposed, um, and when it was built, and, uh, he may have put it exactly where it's supposed to be, as it's shown in here with regards to that, or he may not have. We don't know. Um, I don't have, you don't have something to prove. The only way I could see that you could have, if you intended to move forward with this, for me to issue a permit on this, is to attach something as shown on this plan, and the rear, going across the back of that deck, isn't 33, it's 34. The house is 28, if the house is 28, and you're adding six foot to it, unless my math is wrong, that would be 34 feet, not 33 across the back of the deck. And, um, based on adding something to the existing structure, then I would know what I would be allowed to approve. Otherwise, uh, you don't know, you can't know, um, what you're granting.
Can I ask you a question? Go ahead. Marshall? Yeah, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Um, so, I hired Wheatley to do a job, and there was a temporary building inspector at the time. They passed everything based on lot lines. Uh, I went down to Wheatley to get you an ASBILT. They couldn't give it to me. I have, I have everything here, and my, my problem is, then why was the house passed at all?
I don't know, I wasn't here.
And then my question is this. I needed a means of egress out back over my garage. I built a temporary, a temporary landing, crossed my door with a set of stairs 15 years ago, or 13 years ago. And obviously, I'm, I was, when I did this project, I was gonna build a deck with a set of stairs off the side. So my thing is, is...
If you built a...
Yeah, I'm scratching my head, I don't understand.
If you had, uh, my guess would be, the deck would have been the same width as the house or less than the width of the house, and the stairs would have gone off the back. That I could see. That could be approved.
And they're gonna go...
Yeah, so I'm looking for six feet.
That would be a finding.
I'm looking for six feet.
Right here, you're looking for, based on what I'm seeing, yeah, you're looking for a variance for the six feet on the left rear, and based on what I'm looking at the drawing here...
On the side.
On the front.
Front side.
The front, you're looking at, uh, a finding for additional extending and exist, existing non, non-conformity, which is said is 11 feet. I don't know if it is. It probably is, but...
Yeah, 10.5, all my retention goal.
I don't know, I don't, that could be, this could have been what was proposed. You said you built it. I, you know, I don't, if you put it right exactly where it is, then that is where, I don't know.
Yeah, Moriarty was the inspector out of Holbrook.
Yeah, he doesn't know if you put it where, you know, who knows? I mean, it, so you're asking, I don't have any problem with it, but I mean, I don't know. And I don't know what, if there's other people that have issues with it.
Thank you, Mike.
And he didn't want to get, doesn't want to, I know he doesn't want to buy, spend another $500 bill or whatever for an ASBILT, but...
Sure. I, I paid him in the first place. Where is it?
I would be asking, I would be asking the same...
I went to the Wheatley's office for you, to give you an ASBILT.
If you gave it to me, then I would say, fine, give it to these guys, then you'll know who you're asking for.
I'm kind of upset because I paid the guy.
But wouldn't it be in the papers here at the town hall?
No, it's not. He looked.
We dug through, and it's not in there.
And it's not at Wheatley's office.
I don't know what to tell you. You're asking them to grant something, they don't know that this is where your house is. I get it, I understand why you're upset. I understand why these guys are looking at, well, they, yeah, they want to do it for you. I mean, it isn't a big deal, and Morton Street, you have six feet closer.
It's six feet. It's parallel with the side of my house. I have, it's a corner lot, I have two fronts. I have, uh, Morton Street Extension and Cleverly Street. That's how I was able to get the road in, because it was, I was paying for two fronts. So I'm looking for six feet on Morton Street Extension.
Thing is, you're asking for a variance, and the threshold for a variance is higher than the threshold for a special permit.
Or a finding.
Or a finding. So that's, those are things, you need to show a hardship, um, you need to, based on, um, conditions and other things, um, you know, before we can grant it. Variance is supposed to be...
Sparingly granted.
Thank you.
Is there...
Yeah, it's only six feet, you know, we do that a lot, but...
But if there's an issue, it will two feet make a difference? Because I'll, I'll, I'll reduce it to four feet if that's gonna pass this.
We get back to what Marshall was saying, though, I mean, you don't have anything showing that it's built correctly or where it's supposed to be. I mean...
Well, we need a set of stairs off of the back of the house either way, because it's the second mean of egress. So, right there, that's...
I don't know what's there now.
I mean, we have, uh, we have a plot plan. And it shows, it does show the setbacks. It's not an ASBILT, but it shows the setbacks. Because my farmer's porch, the front of my farmer's porch, which is six feet, is 35 feet to the legal limit. And then my, the side of my house is 35 feet to Morton Street Extension. So this really isn't a, I think, of a deal.
Is there any potential way you could reconfigure it so that you wouldn't need a variance?
No.
No, because we can't do stairs on the other side, 'cause it's too close to the other house.
Yeah, 'cause we had to apply for variance to build it where we did because of the setbacks to Selena Litchfield. I bought the property off of Selena Litchfield, so the stairs can't go anywhere but what we're doing. This really isn't egregious, it's, it's pretty a simple thing, and no one's gonna oppose it. It'll be, it'll be built, built properly by a licensed builder.
Want to read that?
William, um, what was that thing that you said about the variance and the, um, the other?
Finding.
The finding?
Yeah, that's what, the finding is, you're pre-existing non-conforming in the right front, and you want to, um, according to what this says.
Yeah.
Um, and you want to come further forward with a porch, which you're not sure you want to do right now, but that's a finding.
Yeah, right.
You're not creating a new non-conformity, you're just extending an existing.
Yes.
In a one and two family, that's a finding, and the, based on what we're looking at here, the, the left rear of the stairs is a variance.
Right.
Cause you're...
Six feet.
Creating, you're creating a new non-conformity. Okay?
No, no, you, you built this out yourself, correct?
I did.
And this is where you put it?
Yeah.
And now, now you have a hardship. You put the house where it is, and now you have a hardship, we need a variance.
For a set of stairs and, uh, and a landing to the stairs. Six feet.
So you could go straight out the back and you wouldn't need, you know, you wouldn't need anything.
Excuse me?
They said you could go straight out the back, you could, you could configure your deck.
You haven't seen the property, sir.
I have.
So you see the retention wall?
No, I have seen the property.
You see the retention wall?
I'm not an engineer, sir.
Didn't ask you to be. There's a retention wall there, and if I dump the stairs down, that'd be gross.
I think he's talking about going straight out the back, but that would be landing in the driveway.
Oh, yeah, it'd land right in the driveway, I wouldn't be able to use the driveway.
Wouldn't be able to use the car, you know, drive under and park into the garage if the stairs were there, it'd be in the way, you'd have issue getting around.
Yeah, we've been looking at this, uh, since, whatever, last May or something. Why would you deny this?
We haven't denied anything yet.
You need to prove a hardship, sir, okay? That's what you need to do before this...
Well, the hardship is, you can't dump it in the driveway.
Sitting there being smug isn't proving a hardship.
I'm not trying to be smart, but...
Okay, uh, why don't we, um, why don't we, um, take a minute here, open up to the floor, 'cause I think we've, we're pretty much done here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is a hardship?
All right, so, uh, any, anybody? Have anything to say about the project?
My name is Dennis Burke, and I don't want to, want to make anybody uncomfortable because, of course, I'm on the, um, board, um, right beside, I think I'm the only one with this Litchfield, don't we have?
Dennis, I don't, I don't think you should.
You don't think so?
Uh, no.
Want to read that?
Anybody else?
I mean, do you want to read it into the record, or...
Anybody else?
It's up to you, I don't care.
Okay, close it to the floor. All right, back to us.
I mean, I get it, it's only six feet, it's not a big deal.
I, I know, but the way I look at it, too, is you, you built the structure yourself, you put it where you put it, okay? And now you're coming back...
I was, I put it where it was supposed to go.
Okay, you, you put it where it is.
Based on the lot lines.
You put it where it is. Now you're coming back, this is not, this is not something that's been here for 35 years. This is something that you built, what, 15 years ago?
Yeah.
And now you're coming back for a variance.
Zoning didn't change around the property.
Right.
Correct?
So in essence, in a lot of ways, you created your own hardship by putting the building where it is. And now you're coming back and asking for a variance. That's, that's the way we have to look at it.
Okay.
Okay. They've created their own hardship.
I mean, I'd be inclined to, to agree, I mean, obviously, you know, I appreciate your position, but there's certain statutory factors that have to be met for us to grant a variance, and...
Sure.
I mean, one of them is you have to establish what the hardship is, and I'm just not seeing it in this case.
Really?
Yes.
Have you seen the property?
I have.
Okay.
But you're, I mean, the point is, you're not entitled to build a deck on the property. So, I mean, that's the issue.
I'm not entitled to build a deck on the property?
No, not unless it's conforming.
Okay, so, so then, how do we make a second set of egress, then, to the property?
Though, the thing is that, um, what you're showing us is, I, I think, again, I feel that you create your own hardship here, and now you're coming back later on and, and you want to build this. Um, can we make a, do you want to make a proposal? I, the other thing that worries me is what Marshall's talking about, too. There is no solid...
Well, I can reduce, I can reduce that six feet to four. I'm just looking for the stairs not to be in my driveway, I, I mean, it's just, it's ki, it would be gross, I mean, I wouldn't be able to park, I wouldn't be able to get into my, uh, my two-car garage if I had the stairs there, it's just, if you guys have seen the property, what do you want, I, I mean, I'll reduce the stairs to, to three-foot eight, whatever you want.
I think the issue be, and I mean, I mean, I appreciate your offer in trying to work with us, but the issue is that a variance is a variance. It's not that, you know, once you go over that threshold, you have to establish certain requirements, so...
Well, I mean, my thing is, is when I built this house, there was an established deck gonna be back there, and I had the two-car garage under. I mean, you guys gotta work with me. If you've seen the property yet, obviously, you have to work with me. I can't go on Selena's side, because I'm, I'm almost right on her property line.
Anything?
I don't have anything else.
Other than the variance, what other thing can we do? 'Cause wasn't there something else that you said that it didn't pertain to a variance? I don't understand that.
According to Marshall, in order to encroach on the 35 feet, you need a variance.
Yeah.
That's creating a new non-conformity. The extension of the deck in the rear, on the right rear, and the extension of the potentially new, uh, front porch in the right front is an extension of pre-existing non-conformity according to what this plan shows, and that those two areas require a finding. That, the other issue is creating a new non-conformity with the stairs, and that is a variance. Front and rear right sides are finding, left rear's a variance.
So, can I ask this? I don't know a lot about, uh, zoning and, uh, variances, but if no one contestes this, wouldn't you grant it?
No, not necessarily.
We have to go by once in the book and, and what you're telling us, I mean...
Okay, so, based on what I'm telling you, when I have a two-car garage under, I can't dump it in the driveway. I mean, isn't it a hardship?
Again, I, when I look at it, I see it's a structure that you built, um, and you, to me, you, you've made your hardship. And it's not a hardship if you make a hardship for yourself, so, um, that's the way I look at it. Invariance is a very, should be very difficult, and, um, and again, what Marshall's saying about the whole thing, um, it's a red flag for us, too, I think. So I think we need to, we spent a lot of time on this, so, uh, do you want to make a...
There are, uh, three options, you can approve, you can deny, or he can withdraw without prejudice.
If you want to look for the ASBILTS or something like that, and see, maybe that'll leave some, alleviate some of the concerns that Marshall was...
Otherwise, you say deny, now you can't come forward.
The problem is, but, the, the thing is, too, that we've already, I think we've got to the max of time that we can...
Well, he could withdraw and then, without prejudice, and yeah, he can't continue.
There's no way we can continue this, I just want to know.
No, and if they withdraw, if you deny, then he can't come back in front of you for two years.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we should withdraw.
I don't want to withdraw for two years and not have a deck.
No, if we deny...
If it gets denied, you cannot come before us for two years unless it's substantially different. If you withdraw, then you can find the ASBILTS, you can reconfigure the plan, and you could come back and...
And maybe you can show us the plans that you had before, too, I mean...
They're on record. This is a 15-year-old project. I don't understand why this is being disputed. There was a deck back there. And, and the thing is, is when he showed up, I didn't have the money to build a deck, he says, "You need a means of egress off this door." I built a four, four-by-four landing and a set of stairs right in front of my garage door. He passed it. Now, now we're looking at something that's not different, I'm just spinning the stairs around.
It is different. So can we make a, so you don't want to withdraw?
No, I want to withdraw.
Uh, she works for an attorney, so we'll do whatever she says.
Yeah, I would like to withdraw.
Not to withdraw without prejudice. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the petitioner's withdrawal without prejudice.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It being after 7:05 PM, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Jardino's, 497 Bedford Street, Abington, for a special permit to install electronic sign at 497 Bedford Street under 175582-I. Property located on Assessor's Map 39, Lot 22, in the highway commercial zone.
Okay, no bearing on the sewer. Do we have representative? No representative, really? Okay.
I want to make a motion to put this table list to the end of the hearing.
Which one was this?
Jardino's. Right? They're on the right menu.
Yeah, the Italian sushi bar.
All right. Do we want, out of courtesy, to postpone this?
Not, I would say...
How about we do what you said originally, was this...
Just to the end of the hearing.
Make a motion to postpone this petition until the end of the hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right. All right, if the next petitioner is ready, uh, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Erica A. Brown, 41 Park Ave, Abington, for a variance finding for a previously constructed deck increasing non-conformity of rear yard setback at 41 Park Ave under 17529, 17569 in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and appeal of the building inspector's decision under 17576, property located on Assessor's Map 24, Lot 37, in the R20 zone.
And no bearing on the sewer.
All right. Hi.
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 Good.
You have the floor.
I'm sure what to say, other than I want to increase the nonconformity. Um, we, where the deck is built, there was a sun porch. The deck was built, um, one foot wider and about three foot longer. Uh, it's not finished. It, it needs stairs, but, uh, the nonconformity needs to be approved before anything can be finished. You have pictures there. It's not, um, intruding upon any of our neighbors. As a matter of fact, our neighbors on either side have both said that they liked it, uh, and our neighbors to one side have a deck that appears to be the same size, so, um, I understand theirs was probably approved for that side whenever the zoning laws were changed. Um, just looking to have something similar.
We get a lot of people from Park Ave.
Yes, we do.
Almost everyone on the street.
It's regular.
It's like they say, you accept, you accept one, they all follow.
We, the, the house is also owned by my mother. We're, um, trying to buy it from her. We were in the process of buying it, but the bank will not approve the loan without the permit for the deck, so-
So, there was a porch on the back?
There was a sun porch, yes.
A sun porch. And then you guys decided to, or someone decided to modernize it, and you made it a little bigger? Is that what happened?
It, my mother never really took care of the house, and the roof on it, um, was in such bad condition that it caved in, and it basically was just falling off of the house.
So, it got demoed? Okay.
And, and this was built in this place?
Yes.
And so then you, just, without thinking, it was just decided to be a little bit bigger? Right. So, Marshall, it's, the deal is, what, they've increased the nonconformity?
Um, a, uh, mortgage, uh, mortgage, somebody from the bank came down and was looking at it and appraising it. And I guess he's gonna, they're gonna buy it from somebody's mom, and said they're putting a deck on the back of it with no permit. And, uh, I said, "Oh, bummer." So, I went down and saw him, and, uh, yeah, that was the case. And, uh, I looked at it and, um, told him he needed to pull a permit. When he applied and I looked at what we have here, this is a, uh, everything they told you is true. Um, the, uh, he enlarged it and, uh, and built it, and this is a mortgage survey. Uh, as you see, what they've got down here, it's not a plot plan, um, and it's not to be used for what, it says, if you read the language, if you could, you can't because it's cut off on the copy, that it's not to be used for what it's being used for here. Um, it's not an instrument survey. It's just for the bank to make sure that the house is on the property that they want the mortgage on. Apparently, they're holding up the mortgage because of it. It's pre-existing nonconforming, as almost all the properties are there. It's creating a new nonconformity in the rear setback, needs a variance. And, uh, and you, again, here, you don't know what you're granting because you don't know that these figures on here are correct. They may well be, but that's not what the stamp says from the engineer. It says it's a professional, uh, it's a mortgage inspection firm.
So, the situation we are in now is that the deck is built. It's there.
Yep, started, right?
It's there, I saw it.
It's unfinished.
It's, he hasn't completed it, but it's, uh-
The decking and the rails are on, uh, didn't finish the stairs.
And the, the nonconformity is solely to the rear, correct? I mean, it's not, it's not to the side, it doesn't, if, looking at this, right? And so that's the deck, so it's not going-
No.
I mean, you're, you're intruding on railroad spaces, basically.
Is it, yeah, it is.
I mean, it's your yard, but you're getting, you know, you've got that buffer, and, and that's, you're just building into your backyard.
Yes.
The wall.
Why do they need a finding and a variance?
Yeah, I was, I was curious on the wording on that, Marshall.
I don't remember, hold on.
Said, uh, petition, blah, 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 um-
I didn't, uh, remember quite-
For a variance slash finding.
Dimensional density and use forming, uh, pre-existing nonconforming, creating a new nonconforming rear setback, need a variance. That's it, that's it.
Twenty, thirty to twenty-two.
All I wrote down. Plan, uh, rear set, rear setback variance. Um, that's the only thing that I put down. I don't think I put-
You can make them take it down, right?
Um-
We could order, and they could technically.
I don't remember what I signed. Marion typed this, hold on.
Because it's already nonconforming, correct? So, they're just increasing-
Um, based on this mortgage plan-
Uh, it's interesting because it's to the back.
Yes, it is.
You know, that's the weird thing.
You are in the photo side.
Are they?
Based on the mortgage plan.
Well, it was, it was twelve by six, and now it's thirteen by eleven.
Yeah, but we don't know if the house is-
We don't know exactly where the house is, but I think it was a variance for the-
I don't think they're adding any, any nonconformity on the side because it doesn't-
If it was a variance for the rear-
It doesn't look it, because it looks like it might have been short. Doesn't look like it's on, over on that side. Still a little bit light.
I think the issue that I would see there is, we need to figure out what, if we're going to grant relief, what it is, because it's just going to hold up the mortgage longer if we grant the wrong-
Well, you can allow them to put a thirteen by eleven deck on the left rear of the house. That way, I know what I can approve. But you don't, you're not specifying with regards to the setback. The lot's undersized, um, but that's pre-existing nonconforming, and the, uh, the side yard setback is twenty, and it looks like, it says on this print it is twenty, uh, and I don't know if that's true. Says the rear is thirty. I don't know, I might have scaled it off and said, doesn't look like it, because I can't, I don't know.
Right.
And the front yard is clearly non, nonconforming, because it should be thirty-five, so, um-
So, nonconforming lot.
It's the, uh, it appears that, uh, it's a, it looks like it would be, maybe the determination was made that it is nonconforming in the rear as well, in terms of setback, and they're just, well, no, they're increasing that nonconformity in the rear, and that would have been the finding, and maybe you could look at it that way, but I don't know.
What about-
Yeah, because we don't have our distance, but they're not asking for a specific, um, footage. You know, they're not saying we want, you know, we want to intrude five feet in or something like that. They're just asking for permission to put in the sun porch. I mean, it put in the-
Put in eleven by thirteen.
Thirteen by eleven, yep.
Uh, yep. Put a, to allow thirteen by eleven deck on the left rear.
What about the stairs, though? Is that going to push this out even further?
No, that's not a problem on the, on the left side.
On the left side, okay.
The rear is the problem.
And the rear is that wall we're talking about, right there?
Railroad.
Yeah. There's nobody back there.
Right, exactly. That's what we're talking about. Big oopsie.
Anything, Dennis?
I don't know.
All right.
Open that up to the-
Yep, no, no one else? Nothing? Okay. Open up to the floor. Rolls into the floor? All right. Somewhat familiar, but not.
Aye.
Right. We've got to look at it that way.
That's why we're always here. I mean, we, we deal with a lot of properties on Park Ave. I think anytime anyone wants to do anything on Park Ave, they end up coming to us one way or another.
Yep.
Um, I mean, I understand the, the hardships on these properties with that easement from the railroad. Um, I think going straight back, I don't have a, a particular problem with this petitioner's request. I think if it was heading, uh, butting into someone else's, um, uh, space, you know, if it was going sideways or getting closer to someone else's property, then I think I'd be raising the bar higher on that case. That's my opinion.
No, I agree, and I mean, I, I, I mean, based upon what I'm seeing, we're just really reviewing it in terms of a finding, whether or not this is, you know, um, they're just, it's currently nonconforming, and they're just creating a new, or expanding on the nonconformity, so, I mean, all that's back there, as you said, is the, the railroad easement, so, um, I would advise them to, in the future, ensure that they pull a permit before any additional instruction, but, um, aside from that, I don't have an issue with it.
And again, um, this, this is a variance, too. We don't give out too many variances, but we, we do understand that area pretty well, uh, Park Ave, where you have that stone wall, the wall behind you, and the railroad tracks. Um, again, like, uh, everyone is saying that-
Do we establish that we need to grant them a variance?
Yeah, well, it says here in the application that the, uh, his application says, "A deck on the property is already constructed without a permit and increases the nonconformity of the rear yard setback from thirty, which is allowed-"
Okay.
Um, to twenty-two. Uh, he's quoting specific figures, but-
Right.
We don't know that that's, you know, I have nothing-
That was based off of the letter.
But that's, this-
That's what, based on the, the proposed print, print that we have, that, we're not, it's not cast in stone.
What was advertised was just the petition of a deck.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree.
And the current sun porch was twelve by six.
Uh, the current sun porch, it says, kind of was, that porch was torn off some time beforehand, or did you guys tear it off?
I did. It was, uh, six by twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a very old sketch.
Yeah, but it's bigger. It's going further back.
So, we're not looking at a variance and a finding, correct?
Um, I think just the variance for the rear yard setback, to allow a, uh-
I get you now.
Uh, we, we don't know, um, for sure where it stood, where it was, and where it is now. So, uh, I, you know, I don't know how to advise you. A finding to allow eleven by thirteen deck on the left rear off the existing structure. That's the only thing I can think of.
Well, we're looking at that, we're not really-
I don't know what you're, you know, what you're using for criteria, but, you know, because I don't know where it's at.
We want to look at the back here. Is that a, the wooden fence?
Yeah.
You're infringing on the railroad, uh, approaching on the railroad. Variance, variance, variance.
In this instance, going straight back.
I know, it's, it's such typical for this area.
Yeah.
It's just this area.
I don't think anyone on Park Ave's ever been, I mean, they're not looking to do-
We're not, we're not going like two feet away from the, the wall.
Right.
All right, so, um, you guys want to make a?
Sure. Um, on the petition of Erica A. Brown, forty-one Park Ave, Abington, for variance to construct a, was it a eleven by thirteen? Eleven by thirteen, um, deck?
Yeah, I think it's a thirteen-six, I think it is.
It was eleven.
Yes, make sure you get that.
Eleven out, thirteen.
We really care about the out, not the width, right?
Eleven.
Thirteen by eleven. Thirteen by eleven.
Um, eleven by thirteen-six deck, um, on the rear, for a rear yard setback at forty-one Park Ave, under one-seventy-five-twenty-nine, one-seventy-five-sixty-nine, in Mass. Journal, Chapter A, Section six, um, and to repeal the building inspector's decision under one-seventy-five-seventy-six be approved.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Go, sir.
Nancy has a letter for you, folks.
Okay, moving on.
After seven fifteen, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of John J. Connolly, Brian F. Connolly, fifty-four Lantern Lane, Abington, for a special permit under one-seventy-five-twenty-one A four, to allow a three-story carriage house to be restored and renovated into three one-bedroom dwelling units, in variance under one-seventy-five-forty-three, to allow continued use of nine-foot wide parking spaces at two-ninety Adam Street. Property located on assessors map fifty-three, lot one-eighty-eight, in the R-twenty zone.
How you doing?
I'm good. Good evening. Good to have you. If you don't mind, I don't want to forget anything, so I want to re-put my pages and notes, that's all right?
Okay, and, uh, one other thing.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sewer.
Uh, we do have, um, especially, you have to submit the office prior to, uh, building permit sign-off for the storage. Okay?
We, we have requested the following zoning relief for our property at two-ninety Adam Street. Special permit under Section one-seventy-five-twenty-one A, uh, four, to allow car, to allow a carriage house to be converted to three one-bedroom apartments. Variance under the Section one-seventy-five-forty-three, to allow continued use of the nine-foot wide residential parking spaces on our property. This section of Adam Street used to be known as Palace Row due to the stately homes and grand architecture. I'm an Abington resident and have been for thirty-eight years, a carpenter and a home renovator. My son Brian and I are investing some of the old houses in Abington with the desire to restore the architectural history and appearance of these buildings. We hired a local architect, um, he's with us tonight. He's the president of the Historical Society of Old Abington, Don Holwick. He had the plans for our renovation project. The proposed renovation plans have been submitted to you with our application materials. We have been working on the interior of the house for the last three years, upgrading all of the apartments, and during that time, we cleaned out the carriage house. Our submitted plan showed a proposal to convert this three-story, three-story carriage house into the three one-bedroom units. The main floor contains over twelve-hundred square feet of space, and would contain two bit, two one-bedroom units. The upper floor would contain one one-bedroom unit. The bottom floor has a rear entrance and will remain as storage, since we would like to preserve some of the historical horsebon portion of the building, with still the five stall horsebon down below. Property will be connected to town sewer and water. Our plan shows that we comply with the number of required parking spaces for our residents. The variance we seek will allow us to reconfigure our paved parking area and to remove some of the pavement closest to the street. We'd like to remove the pavement in order to let us plant some street trees and landscaping along Adam Street. The property, excuse me, the property currently has nine-foot wide parking spaces, and we'd like to continue using the nine-foot wide spaces. I don't know if we really need a variance to do that, but I thought I'd include it with the request, just to be safe. Using the nine-foot wide spaces allows us to use less pavement and thereby, thereby increase the amount of green space along the street. The ten-foot wide spaces will fit, but we, if we leave the pavement in its current location and don't plant any street trees. It's a much nicer look with the nine-foot wide spaces and the street trees. Again, I don't know if I really need a variance to do that, since this property already always had nine-foot wide spaces, and they work fine, but that's what I'd like to use moving forward as part of the carriage house restoration and landscaping improvement work. Section one-seventy-five-twenty of the zoning bylaw states that the R-twenty zone is intended to encourage compact residential development. A special permit is requested to allow the three-story carriage house to be converted into three one-bedroom units. This property is located on Route fifty-eight and near Route one-thirty-nine, so our location is great, is a great home to residents who work in Abington or in the neighboring towns. Providing one-bedroom apartments on a commuter road follows the intent of our zoning bylaws and is in conformity with other nearby properties on the same street. We limit our residences to one-bedroom units, which helps, helps us limit the number of residents parking and water storage usage, and most of those people all only have one car. With the zoning board's support and approval of our plans, we'd like to get started this winter so we can plant the trees and finish the architectural upgrades in the spring. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to try to answer them, but appreciate your vote to approve our petition. to try to answer them, but appreciate your vote to approve our petition.
Okay, this is kind of familiar, actually. We have something like this by the old schools, North School.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was the same area where we...
Victor Saminoff.
Yeah, it was the same type of setup, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think something like that. Now, this here, in... it appears, as far as I can see, that in January of fifteen, Connolly went in front of the ZBA and got approval to have the fifth unit, which, as far as I can see, was put in illegally with our permits.
Illegal?
Yeah. I don't think their permits were ever pulled to build that. If they were, I don't have any record of it. I don't know if you guys have any records of it.
Just to clarify, it's right when we bought it. We found out it was illegal, so we bought it and then came in front of you to make it legal, because there were people living in it.
It is legal for you to have it, but it, as far as I can see, and you verified that two weeks before you bought it, so you knew how many units you were paying for, I would assume, but it's not legal for you to be using it because it's not, wasn't built with permits. And it needs sprinklers. The more than four units, it needs to be sprinkled, that unit anyway, as will the other three if you are going to entertain those. So I'd be looking for, before I'm going anywhere with this, unless the applicant has some other information, I'm looking for plans of what we've got up there for that fifth unit that is allowed by the zoning letter that was done back in January of fifteen to... and then this unit would have to be inspected, sprinkled, et cetera, and then you move forward. Now, probably has to be accessible, group-two dwelling, controlled construction, et cetera. All of that was under the radar, and then back in fifteen, I was working, I don't remember, you know, pulling my hair out, running around like a chicken with my head cut off, no help, no nothing, and things were going around. And I'm looking at these things going, whoa, and this came up. Now, we're looking at three more spaces. Well, yeah, but subject two, we've got to get this taken care of. The three additional units, they're all attached. All that's got to be sprinkled. They cross the threshold. If the entire building has to be sprinkled, I don't know. I haven't looked into anything that far, but... and the, it's over, potential over-coverage, special permit from planning as well, as far as I can see, just roughly looking at it. I don't see the coverage listed up on here. So there's some issues here that I have with it, and maybe they can all be cleared up. It always permitted, illegit, et cetera. And maybe the, just the next three units, if they were approved, would only have to be sprinkled if it does cross the threshold. That would require the entire building to be sprinkled. Or maybe there's something with regards to a firewall between the two separate, somewhat separate areas with the barn and the house. I don't know answers to these questions, but things I think we want to think about.
Marshall, the house was built like, I don't know, eighteen eighty, I think, somewhere on there.
Yeah, it's ancient.
Yeah. The unit, that, I know you're talking about the fifth unit, but that's not a new, that was built part of the original house. As far as we can tell, when we bought it, the people had been there for years, or a few years, anyway. So it wasn't as if it was something new and it had a new occupancy.
I am. Back in eighty... I just looked roughly at some stuff we had in here. Eighty-two electric permit for a smoke detectors in a three-family. Eighty-three ZBA special permit to convert third floor of existing three-family into a fourth apartment. Building permit to convert the third floor into the fourth. Electric permit says add new apartment to third. Gas permit says in eighty-five, it's a three-family.
This right?
And then somewhere after eighty-five or four, we've got the last thing that was legal was eighty-three, third floor, fourth apartment allowed by ZBA. And what happened after that and where the fifth unit came from, I didn't have any record of it. Maybe there is record of it, but I don't have any. And it was legally created back just before, two weeks before you bought it in fifteen, and at that point, it's going to be sprinkled. And so somebody's living in an apartment that's allowed, but has never been, never had a permit and has never been inspected.
And that's the main house you're talking about?
Yes.
Marshall, that, we currently have an open permit in that right now. Jim was just in there last Friday.
I believe it.
Yeah. But wasn't, I didn't know about any...
What's that for? With kitchens or some other stuff like that or something?
Yeah, we're doing, they're actually doing that apartment over. That's how old it is. It's not like there's anything new, but I had no idea that he didn't, whenever he built it, or whenever he did what he did, I don't even know if that was originally the owner that we bought it from.
I don't know who did it.
Yeah.
And I believe that you don't know.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting anything else. All I'm saying is, I don't have any record of the conversion or that it was allowed until fifteen. And in fifteen, that's when I should have, at that time, when they approved it, I should have advised the board, but I was running around, just, no help, no nothing, and it happened. And now I'm looking at it going, I should have advised the board at that juncture that permits are going, they can have it, and it can be approved, and it's allowed, but it's going to be permitted and inspected, and it's going to meet whatever the requirements are in fifteen.
So we have, currently have an open permit right now. The rough has been completed. Would that cover what you're indicating here?
No.
No.
I don't know what it's for, but no, we have to look at it and give it a certificate of occupancy for a fifth unit.
So our, our belief was the one that wasn't permitted is the one we're doing now because it was the only one that was on its own utilities, right? So we, we...
It didn't have its own utilities?
Right.
So it was illegally put in, and they fed it off somebody else's and included it in the rent or something, ran it off the common meters, and the water was included, the gas, the heat, the electric, because it ran it off the common meter. He picked up the tab, whoever the owner was...
Exactly.
And fed it off that way. Yeah. It's got to be, I got to look at the layout and the utilities, the whole thing, and maybe part of what Jimmy's doing, I don't know what you're, if you're separating it now, which you probably are to, there will be a separate permit to create that new space, and sprinklers are going to come into it, maybe. I mean, if you can find your design professional who says no, I mean, I'm happy to look at that. But, or fire safety scores is another way potentially out of it. An eighteen-eighty building or whatever Doug says it was built in isn't going to fly, because it's a matchstick. But, yeah, and yep, these three units did open up a can of worms. Yes, it certainly did.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have looked at this at all unless I hadn't thought anything about it until this comes in front of me, and now I got to look at this and address the issues. And I pull the folder out and go, oh, really? Uh-oh, sorry.
Well, we do have the open permit now, so I think that if anything, we can do it.
Now's the time to do it.
Absolutely.
Well, one way or the other, yeah. Nobody's in it now, or whatever.
No.
Yeah, so that's, and then we'll look at finishing it up and giving it a C of O. We're going to have to look into, you probably just have a light remodel or something like that, you know, kitchens, bath, something like that.
Yeah.
That's the way we look at it.
Update well, wiring.
That way, then, when we're looking at doing something like this, I'm looking at a controlled construction probably, and then I'm looking at a design professional stamp on it, because it's over thirty-five thousand cubic feet. That covers the town with regards to issues with liability. Anything ever happens in there, and I'm in court, and the judge is, why did you... Well, I'm looking, holding nothing, because this guy stamps as that, you know, because, yeah, we're dealing with a larger structure. And we're dealing with old, you know, it's not knob and tube anymore, but, you know, I'm sure we've got Romex. I hope we have Romex.
Yeah, we just had, Chris just okayed, wiring inspector just okayed it, the rough, two weeks ago. So, yeah, I mean, it had to be done, to your point, it had to be done all new.
Yeah.
Because, right, they just jumped it off another apartment.
I don't see a big issue. The only thing is maybe sprinkling. I don't, you know, that could be making sad. And I'm going to be looking from something from your design professional with regards to why it is not, you're going to try and plead that it is not required. And, you know, I'm all ears. If you can come up with it, I'm good with it.
Okay.
We're just looking to cover the town.
So we can include that in this permit phase?
No, it'll be a new permit for, you know, you've got your little remodel and cleanup and touch-up, and this is a permit to, you know, make, you know, the unit, habitable unit. You're not just rehabbing space.
Okay.
Because as of now, it is not a unit, as far as I'm concerned. It's space within the building that is not habitable. It's not, it could be included in somebody else's space or something, but it's not unto its own. You can't, we haven't created a new apartment through my department. This bill, this board has, but my department hasn't.
Well, it's interesting. We're remodeling something that is...
That they're allowing you while remodeling it, but there was never, a permit was pulled. I'm looking at egresses. I'm looking at somebody gets trapped and they get burned or gets, something happened, you know. All these things got to be looked at when we're creating a new unit, and that's never been looked at. And it may be fine.
Yeah, it's just very interesting. It has egress off the back and, huh? Used to be interesting. Well, just for us to hear this.
And your concerns are what we had of the barn back, when we bought it, it was, the old owner had rented it to a hoarder, and it was full of flammable materials.
Yeah, it's dangerous.
Entire to the ceiling. I'd never, I had a picture and I somehow didn't print it.
Oh, no, we don't want to see it. No, no, no.
Yeah, we don't want to see a picture.
We've seen those.
I see.
So that was our first step of cleaning them out.
And that, and that's why we thought the, to do something with this and to have Doug design something that keeps its historical significance and kind of enhances our solution of what we're going to do with it, other than have people put storage in there that you can't really, can't manage as well as you'd like to.
And we wouldn't do it because of the fire issues, right?
Yeah.
You've got a building that's not sprinkled. There's not enough revenue to put sprinklers in for dead storage. We don't know what we would do with it. You know, we want to keep it. We want, it's really cool. It's got these stables downstairs that we're going to keep and you're not going to use it. We're not going to try to jam a unit in the, and it's huge. It's like half the size of...
What other pictures you got there?
Some of this.
Show them the only hush table. I mean, Doug's been doing design in the town for years.
He's got a lot of them. That's in the basement. There's still, and they still have the hooks where you'd put the, sorry, I only need three of them.
That's okay. I can see with that.
They still have the hook.
That's my man right there.
Done this before.
So the, the carriage house is connected to the main house?
Barely, but yes, it is.
Yeah.
There's actually, right now, it's actually a outhouse.
Right.
Still there.
So the stairs going into it or...
Yeah, the outhouse with the two seats is still there on the back hall.
So, question for you, Marshall, is if, if they have nine-foot spaces now and they have been in continuous use, do they need a variance for the nine-foot spaces if they improve the property and/or increase the occupancy?
Yeah, they, I think they had, I think I calculated the thing. Are they all one-bedrooms?
Yes.
So it's, that would be five and three is eight bedrooms times fourteen-point-four spaces. What do you round up?
Yeah.
Times fifteen, hm?
We read it as down.
Yes, down.
You round down?
Well, if you're working four, you're under five.
Fourteen-point-four cars becomes you just have a UGO or something?
Just based on what we read. It says fourteen.
You know, whatever you guys, whatever is decided upon, but yes, you're creating more required spaces, and they should be ten by eighteen, I think it was off the top of my head. So, yeah, they need relief. To, they have existing, however many are required, and there are going to be more. There were four or five times one-point-three, one-point-eight, I guess you'd calculate, how many would be required, and now there would be fourteen-point-UGO. And that's, that's all there was. Yes, so, yeah, I believe they would need relief.
Okay.
I was just, I was asking, I knew they were decreasing the number, but like the...
Because you allowed five nine-foot spaces, that means you could have ten nine-foot spaces are automatically allowed? No, I don't think so. I don't have a problem with it.
No, I agree. I just, they're not creating a new parking lot, if anything.
No, they're reconfiguring it and adding more.
Goslin's our neighbor, like two houses down, and we've got envy of his landscaping along the street. There just looks really nice. It's cleaned it up a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has those street trees that look so, I think when you come into the town and you go by that area, it looks just beautiful.
That's what saddens me about the widening of Route eighteen now, seeing all this landscape and getting taken out.
Absolutely.
Unbelievable. I mean, you know, it's the traffic, the way the people were.
Okay. All right, so he is, they are, okay.
That's today's picture, correct?
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
All right, so that's where you'd be at, right in the front.
I get it. Okay. So...
There's also going to be handicaps spot for van accessible, I believe, was going to be required in there. I don't think they're showing that as well.
Now, that has to be...
All this stuff is going to be, you know, through the design and through, yeah, I mean, type A, group-two accessible units, you have to have so many. There's going to be, to what extent is necessary on an architecturally significant building and how far will it have to go? You know, will relief be granted if it's needed? Yeah, probably. But, you know, I'm not seeing that in there. You don't have, there's a lot missing here. But I don't think it's a bad idea.
You do have a removable dumpster.
Is there a dumpster on the property already?
Yeah, it's a two-yata.
Accessible unit required, one van, accessible parking space, total fifteen or fourteen-point-U. Required special permit planning regarding coverage. Those are just things that I ran off.
So, I mean, generally, we've viewed some of these carriage house renovations in the past, and speaking to myself, when they're not trying to alter the look of it and they're, it's predominantly like the inside that they're, they're changing, and, yeah, I mean, I think it, it just, it's a good thing for the neighborhood and, you know, it's kind of, it's obviously a multifamily dwelling already, so, you know, I don't, I think the special permit part is, is easy for me on that one. We've approved nine-foot parking spaces all the time. You know, that's a low, that's a low issue. I mean, there are malls that have nine-foot parking spaces now, and I think with the widening of Route eighteen, we're going to get a lot more of them, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. Isn't the town hall, isn't this nine-foot here?
The high school is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yep. Skinny kids.
Go again.
Smaller car.
Completely redesigned inside, everything new.
Right now, yes.
Fire safety, of course.
Correct.
Looks like a really good project for the, for the area. Looks like a really good project for the, for the area.
Thank you. We've got a good architect.
We got the right guy.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna say that, but I've seen some of his work.
Yeah, he was kinda blowing away with the hush dolls down below, all intact, really.
Amazing.
We, we drive by the, you know, what is it, the town hall and the library, like, all right, who designed those, that's who we, we want, and that's why he's here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, anybody else, anything?
Well, I was gonna say that, um, as Mar- as, um, Marshall was talking about the requirements, it's kind of sobering because as we speak tonight, there's terrible things happening in Lawrence and North Andover, so gases used in this building, is it?
Is, is what?
Is gas used in this building.
Is gas, yes, yes, all the units have gas.
So you can see, so, you know, in bringing up those, spending all this time on sprinklers, it seems like a needless thing, but, um, it's just a terrible thing that's happening elsewhere, that probably wouldn't happen here, but it's always a danger. I'm looking at these, um, stables, and I've seen stables just like this on the Boston Harbor Islands, um, that they, uh, built in the nineteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, and I think this project has a lot to commend it. Um, I'm also on their historic, um, every town has a historic commission, um, which is really supposed to look after the buildings, uh, where you don't really have any power, but this, this whole idea of, um, really restoring a building, trying to keep its essence, using, um, an architect whose specialty is historical, um, architecture, it's, it's, it's got a lot to commend it. It's putting a lot of people in the building. Uh, as against that, we have a pressure in our town of, there are people looking for affordable homes, and, um, so that is an issue, and you're trying to keep one, it's gonna be, you know, quite a few apartments, you're trying to put it in with the actual neighborhood. Is the main, the main house has apartments too?
Main house is five units.
Yeah, five units.
One bedrooms.
So, I mean, we see this across Abington, but there's definitely a push for this, you're start, you're trying to put this in with the rest of the neighborhood.
Is it six units or five?
No, it's five.
That's five.
Contested five.
So, yeah, at least temporarily.
The sidebar, there are four there now that are, have occupancy.
Got it.
One vacant one.
And then one that is being just prettyed up, and then they're going to apply, um, or what is required.
Is that gonna mess it up a little bit?
Yeah, that's what my concern was.
We're looking at, we're looking at, um, three, adding three more.
Adding three more.
And now you're talking about near future, adding another one.
The, uh, you know, getting the, you know, addition, I don't know whether you can.
Right, right. Then you're adding poles or probably down the line to add another one. So really, when we're looking at this, we have to look in the back of our heads at, there's three here, plus another one.
The apartment, the fifth is already granted, correct?
The fifth unit is allowed.
Okay.
It's just not, has not been.
It was allowed for the parking at that time?
According, through your board and, uh.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, it was allowed.
Okay.
Regardless, it is allowed, it has not been permitted.
All right, so here we are.
And they are going to permit it, or if I found somebody in it, then I would have to issue an order against, and we're not gonna go there.
All right, so we're still looking at three then, okay, that's good. All right, so that's what we're looking at, that's good.
Three in the, in the barn.
All right, anything else?
So what would we be looking at as conditions in terms to address your concerns about the main house, though? Conditioned an occupancy permit for the fifth building, well, or the fifth unit as well as?
Uh, if you wanted to put that condition in there, uh, you know, you approve these three units subject to, you know, that, all the stuff that they're gonna have to go through to make that approval, but, uh, the, uh, also making application and getting approval to use of the fifth unit that was allowed in January fifteen.
Marshall, just a minute, you probably know the answer, but I don't. If we have, if we have an open permit with you, you could just not sign our occupancy permit until we did it, right?
I've never signed your occupancy permit, I've never issued an occupancy permit for that unit, the permit's never been applied for. I could refuse to give you a final on.
You have a permit on an asset.
When I sign off on a building permit to fix up your fifth unit area, um, that's just states that the work that you did, that isn't an occupancy, that's just, the work was completed. An occupancy is something different. That's creating new habitable space.
And the fire department comes in, signs off that too.
And then we got smokes, and we've got sprinkles, or whatever is required, and egresses and all that, now somebody is allowed to live there. That wasn't done before, they just created a space, fed it off of some other source of energy, and put somebody in there and started charging rent every month there. Oh, boy.
So it's like it worked for them.
So we thought, we thought we did all that, but we certainly will.
I, uh, never looked at it before because, and Paul and I are running around, and, uh, that's why, it's got nothing left. And, uh, then I looked at this application, I said, oh, I'll take your.
Okay, thank you.
Another oops.
That's not something we.
Yeah, no, I know.
All right, gonna open up to the floor? Open it up to the floor?
I'd like to speak on a point, um, one sixty hour, we have a similar situation going on on Town Street with the carriage house, and, uh, this, uh, this project, these guys have good work and good value on attributable assets in town.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, closing to the floor? All right, so, um, closing the floor, uh, and back to us. What are your thoughts, guys?
I don't have any problem with, obviously, the variance for the nine-foot spaces, as we said, those are common now and they're existing at the, at the property as it is. Um, and I'd be inclined to, I mean, I think the special permit, I'd be inclined to grant that. Obviously, I mean, this is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, I mean, it's gonna positively impact what was previously there, the fire hazard and all that, so, I mean, it's gonna be improving, um, the structure in the neighborhood as well. My only concerns is the issues that Marshall raised, so, I mean, I, I think we should just attach some conditions to the special permit, just to make sure that the main house as well as the, the carriage house are all up to, you know.
Codes and safety.
Applicable codes, yeah.
Something tells me that I, I'm in agreement with you, but now that it's on Marshall's radar.
It's gonna be done. No, I know, but, yeah.
Just saying.
Well, they got an open permit, he's not gonna sign off.
I mean, you could add that on.
My pen's dead.
The whole, the whole project's being up to code.
Sure. Definitely.
I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, I was gonna say, he won't get an occupancy permit without observing all the permits, right?
For the fifth unit, um, there's no occupancy, and so.
Oh, is it?
He can't rent it to somebody, um, uh, he shouldn't.
Well, I'm sure he would.
Yeah, and if I saw that it was, then, you know, there's recourse, but hopefully, we're not gonna go there.
No, I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue, but that's why I was saying that, you know, is it necessary to, um, write requirements in our?
It is not.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate it, but, um, I have the ability to enforce it.
Yeah, right. In terms of the, um, the nine-foot parking spaces, you said that they might have to go to planning board for that, just in term, for the lot of coverage?
The coverage, it appears, just looking at the block plan, when I just look at it, I, I remember, whatever the coverage was, I think they're gonna be overcovered. Uh, I don't think coverage is listed, um, by, uh, the engineer, um, probably for that purpose, because it is overcovered, and you don't wanna highlight the fact that, hey, you need to go to planning. But, uh, my guess is, I'll want those calculations anyway, because that's gonna be required.
Okay.
There were a couple other things too, but I don't remember, but they, they didn't pertain to you.
Okay, fair enough.
Go ahead, since you're.
Sure, in that case, I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the special permit under, uh, or make a motion to approve the petition of John J. Conley and Brian F. Conley, fifty-four, Lantern Lane, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five, twenty-one, eight four, to allow a three-story carriage house to be restored and renovated into three one-bedroom dwelling units, and a variance under one seventy-five, forty-three, to allow continued use of nine-foot wide parking spaces at two ninety Adams Street. Property is located on Assessors Map fifty-three, lot one eighty-eight, in the R twenty zone.
Accepting that.
All right, good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with Marshall.
Thank you.
Hey, hey. I don't know if I like the words. No, I appreciate you, I appreciate you a hundred and one percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You too.
Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Center Ave Realty Trust, P O Box two oh two one, Abington, for our MGL chapter forty-eight, section six finding, to allow forty by thirty-two foot addition to an existing storage building at two one seven Center Street, Center Ave, property located on Assessors Map twenty-four, lot one one six, in the T O D zone.
No bearing on the sources. Um, just to bring up that, um, we're looking here for findings, correct?
Yeah, that's the letter we got from, um, Town Council.
Town Council suggests that, uh, was it a variance?
Yeah, yeah, a, uh, per one seventy-five, sixty nine, the bylaw, uh, shall, uh, shall not be exchanged in any manner except as provided herein, says in the bylaw. And, uh, the bylaw doesn't say anything, so, uh, that actually brings us to, um, forty-eight, section six, which says, um, a variance is required. However, uh, there's case law that says that, uh, reclassifying the, uh, the relief sought is allowed, um, and the applicant, uh, could move forward, um, if you were willing to just reclassify and say, yes, it's a variance. The only issue possibly could be that, uh, if there was somebody that was disgruntled, they could, um, bring up that, um, the variance was not advertised, but case law says that you can move ahead, the applicant could move forward with it if you choose to, uh, act favorably on the application, um, with the understanding that the risk is in, on the, the applicant's part.
So it's up to you.
If you chose to.
I mean, you could do a good legal boom like that, or?
You could re-advertise that over.
Yeah.
To that point, um, Town Council said that, um, um, while the application requested, while the application requested a finding, if the applicant is going to seek a variance, um, in their opinion, the matter could still be heard tonight if the actual project had not changed, and the applicant agrees, and if we, the zoning board, um, are satisfied that the substance of what is sought was clear in the application, and that the legal advertisement reflects the nature of the relief sought, that the applicant did not identify the correct provision of the zoning board, then we may reclassify the relief sought.
Right, so, sorry.
I'm just getting my money for it.
Bingo.
Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, for the record, and David Smith.
How you doing?
Hi, how are you? Yes, I talked with Town Council about this, and this issue's come up in the past. If the board is fine with, I think you guys have to make the determination that you feel that the advertising is sufficient, and then we would make the decision, which we would agree to move forward. Basically, the statute says that the advertisement has to have things like the name of the petitioner, the description of the premises, what you're planning to do, and I think you read off the notice.
Yeah.
Basically, you know.
Did say what you were gonna do.
Forty by twenty-three, addition to an existing storage building at two seventeen Center Avenue, so I don't think we could be, there's any more we can add to it.
Right, yeah. The only thing is you're not letting the neighbors know.
Well, the, the point of the case that Town Council recommended is, the neighbors know what's going on, the only reason that they could, a potential neighbor could object, they'd have to say that, you told me it was a finding, it wasn't a, but it was a variance, so I'm gonna appeal on that word.
Right.
Which we think a, a judge would say, it says forty by thirty-two addition to a storage thing, how, how can you say he didn't know it was?
So.
So, with the board's, um, basically agreement that the notice is sufficient, it become, comes to us to say, should we move forward with this or just reapply and re-advertise?
I'm fine with the notice.
Yeah, I don't have, I think it was clear enough.
Yeah, I see it the same way.
Yeah, it's pretty.
We all agree that, now it's up to you.
So we have no problem moving forward, and some towns don't even put the section of a zoning bylaw, you just describe what you're doing in general terms, that the general public understands. If you, you know, some towns say, special permit under section one seventy-five, thirty-two A, and that's the notice people get, that doesn't tell the neighbors anything. So, okay, with that being said, we appreciate it. Dave Smith, uh, and his trust has owned this property, uh, for a number of years, this is, um, to get familiar with it, this is property that is adjacent to the driveway to the T off of Center Avenue. Um, we have submitted the plan, you can see it's a very odd-shaped lot, where it kinda is like a backwards small H, it has some frontage where the Martinian Sons building is that they own and rent, and some, and there's a property owned by Maxwell, and then other frontage owned, uh, by Smith. To the rear and down a slope is existing storage buildings, um, that they've been using it, part of their business for gazillion years, and if you went down there right now, uh, yeah, if you wanna pass those off, Dave took some photos, just in case you haven't gone down there, there's actually, um, some storage trailers, some eighteen-wheeler trailers down there, that he'd like to get, he'd like to remove, they gotta clean up the area.
I'll just pass them on. I can go over if.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So.
Right, this is what I saw, yeah.
And then, if I could, this is the, this is the building that we're talking about extending forty feet, and it would be, it would be that way.
And the uses, use?
Uh, we use it for our business, we, uh, sell on the garden supplies.
Okay.
We need more storage space, business is, is good. And these two, if we, if we were able to do that, the building would be located right here, this is the end of this building.
So are you gonna take out this building?
Oh, yes, what we'll do is, we will make that building look like that building, which is right, which is right next door. They won't be connected, but they'll have a four-foot, uh, cement foundation, and, you know, steel building.
So it's also gonna be the rusty old.
No, no, it's all gonna, it's all gonna, it's going to look like this, and then these three trailers will go away.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'll collect the pictures afterwards, but.
So for the third time tonight, you guys are dealing with chapter forty-eight, section six, which is the most poorly written statute in Massachusetts legislative history. The only thing that makes it this one a little bit easier to apply is this is a commercial building. So even though, if this was a residential building, we would just need a finding, 'cause we're already, we're five feet off the property line and we're continuing that. The, the regulation, the setback should be ten feet, but these are pre-existing buildings. If it was residential, you can continue that existing with a finding. If it's commercial, you need a variance. We have this, trying to interpret three cases, and, uh, Town Council said she was working with four of her attorneys in her office, trying to figure out, what do we need to do here? And we all came to the agreement, go with the variance route, that'd be the safest, easiest thing. It's a, it's out of sight from the neighbors, from the street, it's just adding to the benefit of business and cleaning up an area. I know you've been here for a while already, I won't beat a dead horse, but, you know, the shape, no detriment to the neighborhood, uh, it's an improvement, and it helps an, an ongoing business. This used to be the site of Littlefield Wyman Nursery, the entire area out there, um, years and years ago, um, and then eventually the T bought it and, you know, rail there.
So basically, what we're talking about, your hardship is you wanna get rid of these things.
Exactly, yes.
And you wanna build a building that looks like this.
Right.
And well, and partially the hardship is the building itself is five feet off the property line, five feet, three inches.
We'd like to line it all up so it looks nice and neat, otherwise we'd have to stagger buildings, and that would look foolish, and then you'd have different roof lines, and-
And the building would leak, I guarantee it. So, we're not talking addition, we're talking a whole new building, is that what we're talking?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you would, you're right, you would, it's not, the building, that building, that, 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 the, the skin of it-
Okay.
Is coming, right, we're gonna take the skin off, and then we'll insulate it, as the other building is insulated, and it'd be new metal and a new roof, and a four-foot cement, uh, foundation, you know, we would bring it up. The metal wouldn't go to the floor, to the ground, because it just look, I think it looks classier if you bring the cement up.
That's how, that's how we did the first-
So in other words, you're reconstruction the-
Yes, and that building right now is sixty by thirty-two, and it will be added on for another, it'll still be thirty-two feet wide, and it would be another forty feet longer.
Basically, extending the foundation and then redoing the entire envelope. So it looks like one clean build.
Can you see that? He's lifting it up.
So, would it be right to say that hardship is topography?
It's an odd-shaped lots, where it kinda restricts what the use is, not only the shape of it, but also the, if you've been down there, it takes a really big dive, and then, more so, the hardship is also gonna reflect to the structures themselves. And so if you wanna add on to an existing structure, it's best if you line up the roof lines and the, and the foundations. Otherwise, you know, the buildings would have a five-foot jog in them, and, uh, just grace. Other issues are great hardship for us.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Marshall?
No, I just don't like forty-eight, Section six.
Neither do I.
Well, it's there, and we're not getting rid of it, you can't change that. Um, open up the floor. Dylan?
Again, it's on the plan, uh, and, uh, but, the building down there, as you can see, there's an, needs some interference, and they're doing a good job down there, and their, their business is thriving, and, uh, they can build one.
Okay, thank you.
Do the table a lot.
Sure.
Greg Roder, um, I'm gonna butter to-
What's your address?
At two sixty Center Ave. I don't see a problem with it at all.
Okay.
Part of the property.
Thank you. Alright, closing to the floor, bringing it back to the board. Any concerns?
No.
Um, the business, is it, who needs to straighten out, uh, storage issues he has? Any complaints? Buttered? Alright?
I see, I see in this instance, the, the, the shape of a lot, um, and the, how all the existing buildings there, um, in this instance, create a hardship to grant, in my mind, a variance, to, to basically rebuild that building and extend it.
Right, right.
I'm gonna have to say that publicly, if we're gonna be granting it.
Alright.
Potentially a variance. Um, so, I'll make a motion on the petition of Center Ave Realty Trust, P.O. Box two thousand two, two zero two one, Abington, for a, um, a variance under MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six, to allow a forty-foot by thirty-two-foot addition to the existing storage building at two-one-seven Center Ave, property located on Assessors Map twenty-four, Lot one-one-six, in the T O D zone.
Just to be clear, it's a five-foot variance for the decision?
You have a question?
No, it does, it's, the, the setback is supposed to be ten, the building's gonna be-
Yeah, 'cause we saw that on the plot line at five feet.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, um, petition of Center Ave Realty Trust, P.O. Box two oh two one, Abington, Mass, um, under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, to allow a, uh, five-foot variance, to allow a forty-by-thirty-two-foot addition to the existing storage building at two-one-seven Center Ave, to be approved.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, good luck with everything, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we cycle back around?
Yes. Yep, and, uh, no. Sure, go right ahead. Okay, go right ahead. We'll take, uh-
If you wanna, do you wanna discuss the filing issue? Do you wanna table that, because Andy's not here? The subcommittee?
Oh, I'm gonna, um, he's not here, I'm just gonna-
Okay.
Just gonna, uh, wait till he is here, 'cause, yeah. That's on the agenda, I didn't even get to see that.
Okay.
There. Let's see, we table that. Let's wait till, let's wait till Nancy comes back, take a little break.
Oh, yeah, 'cause she's a tech note.
That's good.
Aspect.
You know what, I might just call him.
A little.
Just so we can shut your mic, please?
No, 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 it's okay.
Okay.
I ain't saying anything. Take care, take care, have a good one.
Be great.
I actually, um, when we did this, I, I did email them and text them, but nobody responded. Let me just see.
The mic's on.
Just stand us through.
Oh, you got Andy's, okay, alright.
I was surprised, 'cause I saw him Monday.
He's still on, yeah. Yeah. You all set, Dennis? Let me look at that, is this on the agenda? Okay, alright. What's up?
We're just, um, so I, I guess I-
Alright, let's, uh, talk about, um, petition, didn't come, okay? Uh, how do we wanna handle that?
Yeah, that's-
How do we wanna handle, uh, petition of the restaurant? Uh, four ninety-seven, four ninety-seven Bedford Street, correct?
Giordano's.
Giordano's.
And they haven't requested a postponement, so, I mean, the clock's ticking, if we don't, obviously, act on it, then it's just granted. Um, but, if there's some legitimate issue, I would hate to see us get high, and then not be a lawyer for ten years.
Right.
Right.
This was a holdover from a month or so.
It was? Did you guys have it a month ago, when I wasn't here?
I don't think, do we?
Nancy? No, I thought they withdrew one, didn't they?
It was another, we had another sign, um, issue, and we gave them a waiver.
Because you guys were August, right? I wasn't here in August.
No, that's right, and, um, we had another sign issue, and we gave a waiver to it, but it wasn't Giordano's, it was somebody else.
Were they here in July, when we were here, and then they withdrew it, because they wanted to scrap the plans and restart?
No, 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 that was the billboard, fifteen fifty.
Yes, that was the billboard, yeah.
Fifteen fifty, that's-
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I don't think these people have been before us.
They haven't, they haven't.
So I, I just tried to call Mr. George Carler, and I got his voicemail.
Now, I'll be honest, this is the first time, since I've been on the board, that someone didn't show up, so, um, Bill, have you ever experienced this?
I mean, we've had that in the past, and, um-
What would you do?
Well, it's, it's two things, one, they can forfeit, you know, 'cause they didn't show up for the hearing, so we, basically, we have the hearing, and they're unable to make their case, so it gets denied.
Okay.
Um, you know, your, to your point a minute ago, sir, is that the clock is, is running. So even if, under like a good neighbor policy, we opted to extend it for a month, um, we start smacking into real deadlines, that if we don't act, um, in time, it could be automatically granted.
Okay, time was for him, um, because he had filed, and then he had, um, requested to postpone, because they were so tied up at the opening.
Okay.
So, we have time, and I'm surprised, because he was, um, before the selection Monday night, he was up, and had asked what time, so, I'm surprised he wasn't here.
Um, I mean, the only, I don't know if this, if there's any precedent to this, but, I mean, we are meeting next week, can we issue any sort of letter, like a show cause, that he has to, you know?
Next week, you've seen what we have to go through next week.
Yeah.
We should just concentrate on that project, that, that's-
Probably a couple months anyways.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we should just concentrate on that project, not introduce anything else to that. Um, it's their responsibility to be here, I mean, that's the bottom line of this.
I'm okay with, you know, kinda giving, allowing under, you know, allowing them, or, or just making a motion to continue it for a month, and then-
Okay.
You know, I don't think there's any, any harm to that.
And if they don't show up then, then we'll have to take action.
Then, then it, it has to be acted on.
And that, that's good timing, still, okay. So I, that's probably the best way to do it. I'd rather not introduce them to a special meeting that we're having.
Right.
Uh, I think that we need to concentrate on that big pile, just focus on-
I wouldn't have to be after, like, that whole thing, and we-
Having a big scene.
Yeah, 'cause they're on the agenda for us, so, so, uh, we can't, they'll be waiting, I, I expect, it's a large project, so-
No, I mean, my thought was just have them issue some type of response to us, in terms of why they weren't able to appear by next week, and if they don't do so, then we would just, at that point, make a determination, whether-
You know what, let's give them another month.
Yeah, we'll give them another month.
Then, if we have the time, I mean, to, to make the decision, um, we do, as Nancy said, we're doing okay on time. But, uh, if they don't show up next meeting-
That's it, yeah.
Then we have to act, we don't have-
So anybody wanna make a motion on that, to?
Um, what's the date of the next, um, October eleventh? I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Giordano's four ninety-seven Bedford Street, Abington, for a special permit to install an electronic sign at four ninety-seven Bedford Street, under one seventy-five, fifty-eight, two I. Property is located on Assessors Map thirty-nine, Lot twenty-two, in the highway commercial zone, until the October eleventh, eleventh meeting.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, just a couple things, um, everyone gonna be at the next meeting? The special meeting?
Yes, and Andy's gonna be there.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Andy's gonna be there, too. I spoke to him tonight.
Um, I would just wanna ask a question, um, will you shoot him, like, a little training session with our town lawyer? We haven't done it in a while, so I was wondering, um, maybe in the next meeting, the special meeting, we could talk to her, or talk to the town co, town manager or something, and